So we have, uh, we have two council members stuck in traffic. I think everybody that came from Kapano that the state decided to start their road work early on the bridge today. So we'll go and start the agenda. We'll do the three items, the, the grants and, and the, uh, those items. And if they're not here, we'll recess because I want them all here for the resolution. Uh, so if that's okay, we're good. Good morning, everyone. Uh, it's September 24th, council meeting, call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden.
Here.
Councilmember Holland is on her way. Councilmember Kanashiro.
President.
Councilmember Kuli is on his way and Council Chair Posel.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Can we have the first item, please?
Here on page two, communications, C two zero two five dash two hundred, communication from the prosecuting attorney requesting council approval to receive and expend opioid settlement funds in amount of a hundred thousand dollars from the State of Hawaii Department of Health, Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division. County Coordination for Substance Abuse Prevention System, formerly known as the Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success Grant, which will support personnel costs of the Prevention Service Specialist Coordinate Prevention Programs, Coalitions and Activities within the County of Ko'oe and help staff to participate in training courses and conferences.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C two zero two five dash two zero one, communication from the prosecuting attorney requesting council approval to receive and expend federal fiscal year twenty twenty six funds in the amount of one hundred thirty three thousand eight hundred ninety two dollars and ninety cents from the impaired driving grant. And to indemnify the State of Hawaii Department of the Attorney General to reimburse up to one thousand forty hours of the traffic safety prosecutor's position as well as travel costs for training and meetings. The grant will cover expenses for the period of October first, twenty twenty five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Any discussion or?
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Well, we did also spend the rule.
Hi. I appreciate all this effort from the grants, um, effort to help alleviate the cost of from our general funds. So thank you so much for that. Um, and then this traffic safety prosecutor's position, I was looking at what they do on, um, it's like one, two, three, four, fifth, uh, fifth page. And, um, so I see what they do there, but I, I guess like when I look on the second page, I just need a little bit more information on supporting data. When we look at the calendar years, like when we have, for example, on twenty twenty four, a hundred and seventy six cases involving traffic violations and achieved a conviction rate of a hundred percent of fifty seven out of fifty seven cases. What does that mean? If we have a hundred and seventy six cases, so that would mean a hundred and nineteen cases are dismissed?
Press, can you turn your back, Alike? No, it just means we received a hundred and seventy six cases, but then the cases that were disposed of during that calendar year, they were, they all resulted in a conviction. So some might come in during the calendar year twenty twenty four but not be disposed of during that same calendar.
So disposed of means?
Closed.
Closed. So whether that means they, they were found guilty or not found guilty.
All of them were, all of them were found guilty.
All of them were found guilty.
Yes.
And then, um.
That were charged.
That were charged. And so, so when people are charged and a hundred percent are found guilty, what does that tell us? That mostly they, they just paid a fine? Is that what that means? Or is that an accident? I'm just, I'm just curious.
These are for O V U I I cases, so operating a vehicle under the influence of an intoxicant, that's specific statute.
Oh, okay. Where does it say that? I just didn't get that. So this is all drunk driving?
Yes.
Okay.
This is an impaired driving grant. That is what this.
It's all an impaired driving grant. Okay. And then we don't have to go detail at all, but just like what I'm curious on is that we've talked about it privately, but when we have a pattern of sometimes people driving without a license and then they continue to have a problem, does that fall under this job? Like when they, when they have multiple violations driving without a license, does that fall under this particular?
Not specifically under this grant. However, historically, um, the deputy who handles like, um, the felony O V U I I, so if there's.
Terrible at acronyms.
O V U I I is up, is what, is what the statutory, statutorily we call DUI in Hawaii is operating a vehicle under the influence of.
Okay.
But it's the same as DUI.
Okay.
Um, so if you get a certain number of DUI convictions or O V U I I convictions within a certain period, that would be a felony DUI, um, that this attorney would handle those, but not like, um, no motor vehicle insurance or no license. That wouldn't typically be handled by this prosecutor.
Okay. So I just kinda wanna just put it out there for the record. Is this like when people are repeat offenders on driving without a license, but so maybe driving without a license isn't this because that would be drunk driving. And I don't know if all these people have been drunk drivers. But just something I want us to kind of look closely at, um, cause if, if they're just driving without a license and they don't get in an accident, that's one thing. If they're driving without a license and they keep getting in an accident, I'm hoping that there would be a more solid consequence. So, um, that is not necessarily this grant.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the prosecutors? If not, thank you very much. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? I just want to say thank you for the submitting the grant application.
Yeah.
Because it is very thorough and appreciate that. Uh, if there's no further discussion, the motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C two zero two five dash two zero two, communication from the Director of Finance requesting council approval to receive and expend additional funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the State of Hawaii Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. Named within amendment number two to the memorandum of understanding for the high wifi program to cover the installation of Starlink hotspot satellite dishes along with any necessary ancillary equipment at the locations previously designated by the county.
Second.
Uh, I did have a question if, if, I guess it's Dell. Could I, just real quick, it's a simple question. I'll suspend the rules. Um, thanks for being here. So this is for not to exceed fifty thousand dollars per month.
Hey, good morning. Dell Sherman, IT manager for the county, for the record. Um, so the fifty thousand is the total cap over the life of the program, which will likely extend, uh, between three to five years. So, um, oh, yeah, I, I think I missed part of your question too. So there's two.
Yeah, well, because it's, it's, it's a little confusing because it says, so reimburse the county up to a cumulative maximum amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars on a monthly basis. So you're saying the total amount is fifty thousand, but they will reimburse us monthly up until we hit the cap of fifty thousand.
So the total amount is one hundred thousand.
Okay.
The amendment adds an additional fifty. Both amounts are referenced, uh, in this MOU. The first amount will be expended monthly until the cap is reached and that pays for recurring subscription costs for the internet access. And then the second fifty thousand dollars is a reimbursement from DCCA that will repay the county for having these systems installed. And that'll be just a one-time fifty thousand dollar payment.
Okay. My only other question is on the recitals, you said this, you, the county has identified eight locations.
Yeah.
You, do you have those locations? Do you know where they are?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I have a list that we can email and you can review them. They're targeting mostly public gathering places, parks.
Okay. So, and that will be wide open to the public for public use.
It will. Yeah. Public, public safety. So our, um, radio system will be able to utilize them in emergencies. They'll be available for, for lots of reasons, but we can get that list to you.
Yeah. I mean, I think the public would like to know, um, when that's available. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had, I had a very similar question. I was wondering where they were and what they're for. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of this. Um, and I was wondering if it was dominantly to help KEMA and first responders, or if it's dominantly, it looks like he hasn't, he can tell us where they are. Does he have it right there?
We do have the list right here. Yeah, we can run down it really quick if you'd like. Mike?
If you have it, yeah, please.
Hi, for the record, Michael Contradis. Um, the locations will be Vidina Stadium, Isenberg Park, uh, Brian J. Baptiste Park, Kilowatt Park, uh, Ke'kaha Fire Park, Way Meea Athletic, um, Hanapipe Stadium, and then we're also working on Ka' Beach.
Okay. And then so I'm just gonna look at the Vidina Stadium. That's just, maybe if people don't have internet access, that might be a place that they can come do it or like, is, is it for emergencies or I'm just curious, it'll always be running? Is that right? People could use it at any time?
This is a new program, so we'll have to make some determinations about how to operate these systems. There may be peak times when we want to have the thing throttled up and running at full performance and then other times when it's just for emergency use, we'll see. But the intent is, is that it's a wifi hotspot that the public can just come and freely use for personal business, um, and be able to provide a level of broadband service to individuals, maybe they didn't have access previously.
And then, um, does, I'm just curious, because I got to use one for the first time at, at a, at a KEMA event in Princeville. How far is the radius around the hotspot?
So these new systems that we're, uh, putting in are, are pretty advanced. The antennas that will be used are likely to reach, um, between three to six hundred feet from the location of the hotspot. So it'll cover quite a large area.
So most of the stadium and maybe a little bit of the parking lot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for IT? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Kipukai and Fern are.
I'm here.
Fern is here. Man, you snuck right in. Kipukai is at the Hanamalo light, so we are gonna recess until he gets back, uh, for the resolution. So with that, we'll take a recess. So with that, we'll take a recess. Customer recorded. We'll get started. Customer recorded. We'll get started. No, don't run, don't run. We don't think you're hurt. Madam Clerk, can we have the resolution, please?
Chair on Page Two, Resolution Number 2025-36, Resolution Adopting the County of Kauai Pre-Disaster Recovery Framework.
Move to approve. Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? We sure can. With that, I will suspend the rules.
Aloha, Chair, Members of Council, Kaina Hall, on behalf of the Planning Department. What you have before you is a joint, um, project essentially between planning and KIMA. But, uh, Sea Grant was kind of the lead on this, so I'm gonna just turn this over to Ruby to kind of give the presentation, and we'll be on for any questions after. Thanks.
Welcome, Ruby, Pap. Very familiar face, haven't seen you in a while.
And then you push your button?
Welcome back.
Yes, I can.
And identify yourself.
Aloha, Chair Reposo and Council Members. It's very good to see you again. Um, I do have a presentation on this item.
Identify yourselves for our captioner, please.
Yes. My name is Ruby Pap, and I am a Coastal Land Use Extension Agent with the University of Hawaii Sea Grant College Program, and I'm based here on Kauai with the county, have been for many years. For the past couple years, um, I've been working with the county and facilitating a process for the county and its partners to develop a pre-disaster recovery framework for the island. Uh, the framework was completed in May, and we're here to present the draft resolution, as Kaina said, and for my part, I'll just provide some background on the project, and I have a few slides, um, and you have the full document attached to the reso, I believe, so hit those, uh...
I'm gonna put turn it on, but it'll turn off your mics.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Just have this for later. Okay, so move on. Oh, just, this just shows the major partners of the project, the County of Kauai, Sea Grant, NOAA, and Tetra Tech was our consultant. So why prepare for disaster recovery? Um, the County of Kauai has experienced a range of disasters, there's just a few pictures on this slide, um, from devastating island-wide tropical cyclones to localized, yet still impactful wildfires, flooding high surf and wave events. An important example, um, as many of you have experienced, was Hurricane Aniki in 1992. 71% of Kauai's homes were damaged, 7% destroyed, and 8,000 people were left homeless. Um, the county departments at the time of planning and public works, who typically processed the zoning and the building permits and the coastal zone management permits, were overwhelmed, and without having an established plan for recovery, uh, and redevelopment post-disaster, it took weeks for the departments to decide to waive to review, uh, to waive review and permitting requirements for repair and reconstruction for over 14,000 damaged and destroyed structures island-wide. So the delays left residents without clear communication and immediate recourse. Um, and also, just simply waiving permits allowed everything to be rebuilt in place, much of which is, um, as we know, were in vulnerable areas such as the shoreline or next to rivers and streams. Um, so this ultimately increases the community's exposure, uh, to future storms, uh, like now, and chronic coastal hazards that we're experiencing, um, such as sea level rise and others. Uh, the risk of disaster events is increasing under a changing climate, and the county is already experiencing the impacts of climate change, including chronic sea level rise and more frequent and intense storms, flooding and wildfires. Um, and so the need for more advanced preparation and planning for recovery processes, um, and Kuliana, just planning for whose Kuliana is what, um, has been recognized by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, the state, and Kauai for quite some time, um, in several different documents. I'm going to move the slide on. So these are just a few of the many recovery issues that come up time and time again in almost every location that has a disaster, not just Kauai, um, including funding, whose roles and responsibilities, repairs, reconstruction, communication with the public, and vice versa, having public trust. Housing is already a huge issue here, um, and exacerbated by these storms, damage to infrastructure, uh, business, uh, recovery, social services. You know, we've been, we went through it, uh, with COVID, we've gone through it with other disasters like the floods on the North Shore, um, so this is not new to any of us or to you. Um, the recent examples in the state, um, such as the Maui wildfire a couple years ago and Lahaina, very unfortunate. It illustrates just how crippling these issues are, and especially when there's not a, a process for recovery or a plan in place for recovery in advance, because they basically had to write their recovery plan as they were responding to all these terrible issues in the disaster. So this is, um, a graph that we see, or a diagram that we see a lot in documents. Um, this is the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Continuum of Disaster Response and Recovery, um, and it illustrates just the different phases, um, that we're always in preparedness, it's ongoing, and then short-term is, uh, response, and then long-term after that, um, can last for months and years is, uh, where the recovery process. So disaster, disaster response and recovery operations will begin and end at the local level with the County of Kauai as primarily responsible for post-disaster operations, and the speed and manner in which disaster recovery efforts are activated and undertaken can either lengthen or shorten a community's ability to recover. Um, so the county has a regularly updated and routinely practiced Emergency Ops Plan, KIMA does, and, um, it's, it's activated to gu, to guide disaster response, so that immediate aftermath, uh, but the transition to disaster recovery has thus far remained undefined in terms of the structure and format for at least more longer-term issues. So, um, the benefits of preparing a, uh, disaster framework are numerous. This pre-disaster recovery framework will help fill that gap that I just talked about, um, but it can expedite recovery because we have the responsibilities defined, supports effective communication, because that, that can be outlined and, um, in the processes spelled out, um, in terms of communicating, uh, with the public and communities, uh, and it provides opportunities for more climate resilient recovery, such as rebuilding stronger and better, um, and builds public trust, um, to have those communication protocols in place and processes in place. So this is the project. I, um, you know, we've, like I said before, the need has been recognized to do something like this, um, and so we applied for a grant, and, um, we got a small grant from NOAA, so one out, Mahalo to NOAA, um, Sea Grant and the Office of Response and Restoration. It was a $180,000 grant, which mainly paid for consultant time, Tetra Tech, um, and then also we had a local, uh, community group that we funded in Anahola to do some visioning work in their community, and that was Ina Alliance. And, um, yeah, the key outputs were this framework that's before you today, um, and then the Anahola process, and, um, we have a Strategic Way Forward Report as well that, um, outlines the next steps. One of them is bringing it to you folks here at Council today. So the framework clearly recognizes that disaster recovery requires the whole community, including numerous state and local government departments, utilities, recovery nonprofits, as well as local communities that are doing a lot of work. An essential piece of the project was to establish the Recovery Working Group, and also we had a Stakeholder Advisory Group. Um, this group includes representatives from over 40, uh, departments and organizations, um, and the leaders, the major players, were the Mayor's Office, obviously, KIMA, obviously planning, and, um, Office of Economic Development, but there were many others on the list, and there is a list in the beginning of the PDRF, if you want to see those, uh, players. And so the process was, we did several focus group interviews with different organizations to identify recovery issues. We had several, uh, meetings with all, with excellent attendance, um, by many organizations, um, and the Recovery Working Group worked to, um, draft the PDRF, to review it, to comment on it, and most importantly, everyone agreed to their specific recovery support functions, which is identified in the document. These are what they call RSFs. Um, and the Recovery Working Group also guided the community process and helped out, um, certain members helped out with the meetings, um, as government experts and such. Um, let's see the next page. And so here it is. This is the cover of the Pre-Disaster Recovery Framework, which was completed in May, um, and it basically, it essentially lays out, um, the Recovery Management Organization, um, for the county, which will be activated post-disaster. Um, and also the process for recovery and sets up a structure of Kuliana and guides, uh, recovery operations for the ne, after the next disaster. Um, this is just an excerpt of the org chart, or one of the org charts, um, and it includes the, um, six recovery support functions, um, but you can see there's a local disaster recovery manager that would be, um, established at the, at that time, and an executive council, recovery program units, and then, most importantly, I just wanted to go over the main recovery support functions, which is the real meat of this document, um, and those are all in the appendices at the end. And one is community planning and land use, two is economic recovery, three, health and social services for housing, five, infrastructure systems, and six, natural and cultural resources and historic preserv, preservation. So again, the intent is to guide action and decision-making in order to expedite the county's recovery process and also do it in a more sustainable and resilient way. Just for my last slide, I wanted to emphasize the organizations that are charged with leadership and keeping this alive and, um, you know, one of those documents that will be exercised. The County of Kauai, KIMA, um, responsible for, um, safeguarding, handling, transmitting, storing the PDRF, Office of the Mayor, um, will, uh, direct the Planning Department to update it as needed, um, so planning is a big part of that, and, um, and then also, let's see, um, the Recovery Working Group will, will still be convened from time to time. And, um, that is actually my last slide, so I would like to see if anyone else from our team has any concluding remarks, or if I missed anything, you wanna add anything? There you go. Yes.
Hello, my name is David Kennard, and I, uh, work with the Kauai Emergency Management Agency, uh, and previous to that, I worked for the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, and then I also worked with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So I've been coming down to the local level. Um, I, I just wanna mention a, a couple of things, uh, that, uh, you know, we've had experience both in Kauai and in Hawaii with big disasters, and the transition from the immediate response and immediate recovery functions that are usually the Kuliana of the Emergency Management Agency to a longer-term recovery is not an easy process. And what this framework does is try and, as, uh, Ruby said, put some guidelines on how that might happen. It, it's just a framework, it doesn't, it's not set in stone that this is exactly the way that it has to happen. With emergency management, the system that we use, we always say is flexible and scalable. With emergency management, the system that we use, we always say, is flexible and scalable. You know, if you have a small disaster, you may not need to do all the functions. If you have a big disaster, you may, all hands on deck, and trying to organize that in an effective and efficient way is something that we in emergency management have had a lot of opportunity to experience and implement. What we'd like to do is to use a similar framework in the long-term recovery world so that those of you who are fortunate enough, unfortunate enough, to experience Aniki here on the island knew, know that it took a long time to get things moving, it took a long time to get the economic recovery, a long time to get things back in place, even though Kauai was a community that was very well resilient at that time. I don't know that we are still as resilient as we may have been 30, 35 years ago. I include myself in that. I wasn't here, and I was over on Oahu. So I think this is a great work, but it's important to remember that it's just a framework that allows us to think about how to organize these functions in recovery that are really not a KIMA kuliana, we're more the response and immediate recovery folks. What we require is a broader framework, a broader group of people to do the recovery in housing, the economy, in social services, so that's what the framework provides.
Thank you. Kaina, anything to add?
No, I'm just here to support the amendment.
All right. Any questions for any of the, go ahead.
I want to start by saying thank you for the work, and that I appreciate the proactive approach. This is what I would call proactive rather than reactive, so we're prepared for that, and I really appreciate the local control emphasis. I just want to know a little bit more about the local disaster recovery manager. Is that going to be like a new full-time position, or will that be, I could think of different people in the different departments that might be picked, maybe you have a different local disaster recovery person if there's a lot of infrastructure damage, or maybe then if you had a big fire? Is it something that we would determine ahead of time, there's some people, and then depending on the disaster, who that is?
I think you hit it exactly, you know, the aspect of this being flexible and scalable, depending on what kind of disaster it is, the person that you want to lead the recovery effort might be someone different. You know, I usually think of it being somebody in the mayor's office who has the authority and the oversight over all the departments, but, you know, if it's a big flooding event, you may end up, you know, needing a much heavier public works emphasis, and so you might ask somebody from the Department of Public Works to be the overall lead in this. Or, you know, it may, if it's like a big wind event that has, you know, devastating effect on the housing on the island, you might want your director of the housing department to be the lead in addition to having the separate recovery frame, sorry, the recovery support function, you might want that person. So it, the document allows that to be something that is decided at the time. One thing that I would want to also point out is that we don't want to wait until the recovery, wait for the recovery person to be in place, well down the response process, we want to get that person in coordinating with the emergency management structures, because many of the decisions that one makes early on in the immediate response and immediate recovery process have very important, large implications much later down the process. And so if you decide, oh, you know, we desperately need to put this road exactly back where it was before the event, but that road has consequences in how you can recover and where you can recover, you need that person part of the decision-making process early on so that you can pull through those recovery implications.
Yeah, the Storm 18 event would be an excellent example on that. You might have even been thinking about that as you're giving that example. I see in here that there's a framework revision history, and so this, as you said, would be revised from time to time, probably largely directed by planning. Would that be because we put in a whole new highway, or we put in new emergency exits? I mean, this probably feathers into the hazard mitigation plan to some degree, I mean, so when it gets, how often do we think it will be revised? And then I liked seeing on the resolution, it's towards the end somewhere in here, that every time it does happen significantly, it would come before the council again?
Yeah, correct. It would come back before the council, and ultimately, somewhat to David's earlier statement about, you know, depending on the event we're dealing with, to a certain degree, the update also depends to the built environment that might happen over the next three or four years or five years, as well as the events that-
Would already directive? We would already be violating that security directive, as this document is unclassified for official use only, and it's, so it contains information exempt from the public release under the Freedom of Information. This is a really serious thing here in saying limited dissemination to county, plenty of detail. So that, that gave me a little bit of anxiety, so then I started looking, so that, that gave me a little bit of anxiety, so then I started looking, what are they hiding, you know, but why is that in here?
Do you want to go first?
Jump in real quick. Yeah, so the framework and what's before the council is not sensitive, this is, it's a very broad framework, but upon updates and further going into details of what could be coordinated, quite honestly, should be coordinated in the post-disaster recovery response, is infrastructure assets, and infrastructure assets are, under Homeland Security, potential vulnerable points from foreign actors. Our water department, digital and physical assets are protected and classified because of that potential. There are foreign actors that are actively engaging in municipalities, and County of Kauai is not, doesn't escape that, and so-
Could be a target pretty easily. So I probably would have panicked less if there had been something underneath that saying why. So that would be my recommendation, because we never did even see particularly a really key infrastructure asset that's vulnerable, so I would support that for that reason, but I felt like, well, don't tell anybody, you know, like, well, we got to tell people, and we're telling them right now, and you put it on the, so I was, had a little bit of trouble with that.
We have other documents that, you know-
I got to look at what page it is, but where they list which things we are working to protect, because I did think about that, and I looked, so this is trying to have the breadth for the other type of disasters that is not mentioned here. Okay, just for clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions for our panel? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Mr. Konashiro?
I just want to say I appreciate all the work that was put into this. I think it provides some continuity, you know. No one has to like sit there and think, oh, what should we be saying, and what should we not put in? I mean, it's kind of templated out, so, and the message is always going to be consistent with emergencies, which-
So it's helpful, I think, when we're going through emergencies and disasters, we need all the guidance, we can't, because we're dealing with so many unpredictings and stressors and stuff, so I just want to thank the administration and all your hard work and everything you guys have done. I think it's a wonderful document, thank you.
Mr. Cavalio?
Just following up again, really appreciate the layout and the team effort. I think I like that pre-disaster, current disaster, post-disaster, you will, those are the three, right? And then just the team effort in preparing, you never can be overly prepared, but there's always an effort there, and I like the layout, it went through pretty much all of it, and having gone through that, so I like the team effort that is on the table. It's not about who is involved, it's about that structure that will make it happen, and I just appreciate the-
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, Jen, and the team for being proactive. When we talk about disasters, the best time to prepare is before it happens, and so thank you again for going above and beyond and modeling the way for our community.
Mr. Kuline?
Yeah, not repeating all that's been said, I too just want to echo my gratitude. Mahalo nui loa, especially to you, Ruby, who has worked on this for years, and with the coast and all of that, so thank you for all your good work over many, many years.
Who started?
Good work over many, many years.
Who started?
Yeah, I have a lot of the background stuff, and so I saw that this funding really came out in 2016, in the Biden administration, and that it looks like all the, all the counties are doing it in the state, and so it looks like you might be the last one to get it done, I'm not sure, but it looked like, you know, everybody is-
All of it is. And the reason I didn't read it, because typically I do, but, you know, when you look at, and Sea Grant, you know, the University of Hawaii Sea Grant Program has been a partner of this county for, gosh, a couple of decades now. Ruby has been here in this chamber numerous times for different topics, so, you know, I have no clue who Tetra Tech is, but I know for myself, the partners that we do have at the federal government and the state, University of Hawaii, was enough for me to trust that this is done. I've often said that, you know, I put our KIMA against any other KIMA or any other emergency management agency, I've seen that, I've watched it, I've seen it, so that adds validity again to this process. You know, I often talk about the military, you know, the military has a checklist for every aspect of the government, you know, how to change a toilet paper roll in the bathroom, there's a checklist. There's a checklist for everything, regardless of where you go in this world, on any military base, every function of the military has a checklist, and that's what I look at this as. This is, appreciate the explanation that is fluid, it's a living document, and it changes, and what happens with this, this next disaster, God forbid, will be, could be entirely different from the one after that, and the one that we had before. Hurricane Aniki exposed a lot of vulnerabilities, and this kind of puts it all together in a framework that we can at least have, we can, we can hit the ground running, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, rather than get together and say, what do we do next? So appreciate the work, appreciate all that you've done, and I did want to, and I wrote this down, I got to go find it real quick, the AINA Alliance, I was honored to have been able to attend one of their meetings, Zoom, Ruby, you were on there, Kipukai was on there, and the work that they have, you remember? The work that they have done up until this point regarding the Anahola area is just phenomenal, and when I saw that in here, it just, it-